We're going to call this meeting of the Monroe County Council to order. This is our meeting for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2024 at 5:00 PM here in the Nat U Hill Meeting Room. To note, it's 5:06. We're starting a little bit late. I would ask, or I would note with this call to order that all council members are present here in the Nat U Hill room, and I invite everyone to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, that takes us to Item 3, Adoption of Our Agenda. And council, I'd like to note a couple of things that have occurred since this agenda was posted. And there's been a few different changes based on ongoing discussions with various entities that are connected with these appropriations. And so without objection, I would like to recommend that we table Item 8A, the JAG Grant Additional Appropriation to the May 28th meeting, and table Item 14B, Resolution 2023-02, Knowledge, Skills and Abilities KSA Procedures to the May 14th meeting. Ms. Turner King.
Actually, can we table the JAG Additional Appropriation indefinitely? We're waiting on answers from the grantor, and I don't know when those answers would come, are going to be provided. So I'd rather table it and then just put it back on the agenda when I have those answers.
Yeah, I will amend my prior offering, and if there's no objection, we'll table that indefinitely, the JAG Grant Additional Appropriation.
And it's 14C, but we're also...
It would be 8A and 14B. So 8A would be indefinitely tabled, and 14B would be to May 14th.
Oh, that's not... Or definitely not.
Okay, tell me what I should be saying.
14C.
14C, thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
And B is on our agenda.
Just to make, I'm going to make sure to say this, just so that we have this on the record as best we can here. Council, without objection, I'm going to ask that we table Item 8A, JAG Grant Additional Appropriation indefinitely, as well as table Item 14C, Resolution 2023-02, Knowledge, Skills and Abilities Procedures to May 14th. Is there any objection? Without objection, so ordered. Thank you so much. Any other changes to the agenda that councilors wish to make? All right, seeing none. We will move on to Item Number 4 on our agenda, which is Public Comment. We have a public comment now for items not on the agenda. There will be a time limit of three minutes per speaker. I do want to state something I've said before in meetings, that all members of the public are welcome to comment here in the Nat U Hill or on Teams. And so for items not on the agenda, comments you have, please come forward here in the Nat U Hill. We'll take them one at a time, or raise your hand on Teams, and we'll recognize you. See no items for public comment. We'll move on to Item Number 5, Department Updates, and I know we have a few. I know we've got Corey Grass, our Jail Transition Director, and he's going to talk to us next.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. If you would go ahead and throw up the PowerPoint for me upstairs, I'd appreciate it.
TSD's working on that now.
I put together a last week, kind of a generic overview of some of the stuff we started with back in January, that some of the tours we've taken, the due diligence, and some of the companies we've met with for the products that they sell for the new jail. So that's what I was saying here, with the information gathering, due diligence that we started a couple of months ago, and some of the outreach. Next slide, please. Very early in the process, we reached out for DuBois County in Jasper, Indiana. They have a new facility, smaller than the one we will likely build, but 140 beds, which are about 70 occupants right now, about half capacity. They, what they did is they took their old jail, moved the inmates to a new facility, and then took the old facility still attached to make that sheriff's office an emergency management and things like that, to repurpose that. It was early in the process, and again, probably not the same scale that we'll be building, but the sheriff there had a lot of good points that he had learned the hard way along the way about pre-planning, as far as future growth, infrastructure, things like that, that he kind of got caught flat-footed on that we could learn from. Next slide. Franklin County, Ohio, I think a lot of you, or some of you, have probably been in that facility. It seems to be, yeah, the newer, kind of the Taj Mahal of what people are doing in the future. Rather large, obviously larger than we're going to do, with 2,000-plus beds. The employees there, they're under, they call it their core team, which is transition. It's a dozen or more people. They've done this for years. They toured 63 facilities around the country, including San Diego, Texas, all kinds of different places. They said they felt that they took the 20 best-type facilities and kind of merged them all together. They told us early in the process, in the meeting, that we would probably kind of go blank after a while, and after seven hours, I kind of did. It was very overwhelming. They do, their attention to detail, the thought that they've put into the process is amazing. It was a sight to be seen. They're not fully occupied yet. Next slide, please. I think the next slide hits on it, but they are very much focused, it's not quite, very much focused on morale of the inmates, but also of the staff. It was, again, very impressive. I put this on here last week because the left side of Monroe County, our jail, that's what David Gardner is able to keep us afloat, literally, with water issues. But, and we've been lucky so far with no major issues with that kind of stuff. But that's what we're, we literally have wires sticking out. David has rigged up these switches and things to try and control the water flow, so the inmates can't flood the facility and cause major problems. The one on the right, I wish it was a little bigger, you could see it better, but that's the new technology, that you can tell just by looking at it, where how far behind the curve we are on water management, both saving money, not able to flood the facility, not able to flush contraband, those things can be controlled electronically from the control areas. Again, very impressive, amazing, pretty standard these days. I mean, I don't think that's out of our ideas, our range, and what we're hoping to do as well. It seems to be most of the facilities we visit are doing that now. Much more accessible when the issues do come up, too. There's a chase that goes between the two cell blocks that, again, we don't have. David Gardner has to get down in a closet and kind of break his back to rig these things up. So, next slide. As I mentioned earlier, new ways of thinking on inmate morale and also the staff. Lots of light and color. That's, it looks like a doctor's office, the medical facility there on the left. Again, there's no inmates there yet, so that does help with the cleanliness, some of the issues, but they're on the right path. They explained to us, they're on the right, that is, they moved their food trays, where the food trays go through the doors, usually centered, never seen it not centered. They found that when they were trying to cuff inmates to safely remove them from their cells, that they were vulnerable as staff during that time when they opened that door. They're still away from the kind of attack you or charge you. So they moved those food trays on every single door to the right-hand side there. And then there's a latch they welded on, or a thing that they can put a tether on, so they can handcuff an inmate through that food tray for their safety, tether them to that thing, and if they open the door, there's a very short distance they're allowed to be attacked or be, you know, charged. And some of the, and you can't really see in that picture maybe later, but some of the cell blocks with more troublesome inmates, they have the leg shackles on the same thing in the bottom right. They found that when they handcuff inmates through the shackles, through the food tray, then try to reposition to get the door open or shut, it's very awkward as well. So they put the leg shackles there on the ones they tend to have problems with. So, again, just very forward-thinking. They went through and did a lot of survey, which we're doing of our staff, to ask, what are the major problems we have right now that we can fix? And the use of clocks, simple things like clocks, this, you know, the use of safety tactics, the use of, next slide, I think there's some more things. But the wellness center they developed for their staff to work out, they're on the right. I mean, they even have a spot back in the corner there where people can do yoga. They found that there were some issues with people wanting privacy, so they built walls for that kind of stuff. The thing on the left is a last chance container, where if you are arrested on the street by a patrol person, patted down, and nothing's found on you, you're brought to the facility to be booked in, you're patted down again and searched, and if nothing's found on you, they have a really nice waiting area, almost like a hotel, where you can wait, make phone calls. They have a board that tells you where you got in the process of being booked. There's a box there, and it says on the box, this is your last chance to dump contraband, whether it's narcotics, weapons, anything that could hurt somebody, this is your last chance. You can dump it in that safety box at locks, and you'll be no, you won't have any repercussions, no charge or anything, but if you get into the facility with it, you're going to be scanned, you'll be charged with a felony for interference. So it seems like a very simple concept, and surely things that we can do in our new facility as well. Next slide, please. The first manufacturer that we visited was just a couple of weeks ago, down in Georgia, Steel Cell North America. They pre-manufacture steel cells, just like their name. They explain some of the benefits and how they can speed up our timeline and/or safety issues on the way they're doing business, growing exponentially in their work right now. They're currently producing over 2,000 cells for the new DOC, an Indiana DOC facility in Westville. I think there's a picture later, but they have them stacked up in a warehouse. They can prefab them and have them ready to go and to be delivered as we need them, to help our timeline and avoid weather issues and things like that. Next slide, please. So on the left there, that picture again, those are pre-made cells, waiting to be shipped out. The, to the right of that is the, those are the front of the cells that have not been prepped yet. Those other ones on the left are the back of the cell, so that's not how they would be set up. But it kind of shows you what a chase would look like between cell blocks. Again, where we can maintain water, electricity, light. And there's all kinds of things that can be handled that way, much safer what we're doing now, much easier. On the right is just part of their warehouse, where the right-hand side there, they have triple-stacked cells. They don't put them that high during construction, but for storage, they can store them that high, and they have 1,500-ish cells right now, prefabbed and ready to go for jobs that are going out. Next, please. Also in Georgia, on that same fact-finding mission and due diligence, we went to Titan Steel Door. They work hand-in-hand with Steel Cell North America. They gave us a great tour of their facility. They explained their process, what they're doing differently. I hit on this last week with the commissioners, but I find, besides the information I learn on these tours, like specifics of like products, it's great to be on these tours with people from our area, and also the middlemen from real-time detention, because they were explaining to us this new way they're doing the doors for the food trays again, that we have tons of problems with here, and they explained the way they were doing it. And David Gardner from Monroe County asked them a question about the way they greased that because of food contact, and it perplexed them. You could see the light bulb going off, and they said they were going to reevaluate their process and get down, go and look at how they were doing that, because they may change the way they're doing it based on David's questions, and maybe the process may have improved that they were there. So traveling with someone like that, picking the rain, is fantastic. Next slide, please. There's a video there if you can click that one. Again, it just shows all three facilities, I'm going to jump to another one here in a second, but Steel Cell and Titan, as well as Willoughby, who'll be coming up here shortly. But all three manufacturing facilities, you know, very industrial, they're dealing with metal and all kinds of products, but I was super impressed with how clean they were, how happy the staff all was, the facilities are just amazing, the way they're doing business. And this was just, again, how they laser cut a door, they cut, you can have it to your specs if you want, two little windows or a big window, or however you want it to have it cut. But we saw the entire facility, how they weld their products, the way they're doing it differently than other people, and the way their locks are manufactured. So it was just very worthwhile to just be there for a few hours. Here's the next one from Willoughby Industries. As you can see, they're in USA, Indianapolis-based company, and they're a huge player in the plumbing and fixtures. They've joined the correctional lock business because another company went out of business, and it really, it limited the amount of options we would have had from two different companies, and they joined the market as a third company, and really put forth a lot of effort, a lot of money, to get us a third option. They also work hand-in-hand with Steel Cell and Titan Steel Doors. And they have, one of the things they all three talked about was if they're on-site at your facility and there's a problem with a door, but Willoughby's there, they can also address that door sometimes to help out or vice versa. They all work hand-in-hand. It's a product that works together. Next slide, please. I mentioned last week again to the commissioners, but it's a very boring picture of a room at a stainless steel production facility at Willoughby last week in Indianapolis. The reason I put it in here is because what I hear time and time again from David Gardner, who's holding our spaceship together, is he's tried to get help on some of the locks, some of the things, breaks, he's come, it's gone out of business, and for six months, he can get no help. On this tour that day, they mentioned to us that that is a, they're setting up a training room, so people that use their products can be brought to Indianapolis and sit through a training class to learn how to fix it, and then also to train people back here how to fix it, so we don't have to wait and have issues with safety or financial issues. So they're just doing it totally different than has been done in the past, which is great for what we're trying to do moving forward. Next slide, please. Hamilton County, I know, I think some of you have visited that as well, probably much more similar in scope and size to what we will probably try to do locally. They did expand here in the last couple of years, and they went ahead and roughed out a second spot in their facility, which they're getting ready to use very quickly, due to some other uses in the county. One of the things I noticed there, we've talked about the glass they use and the control center, and how they angle it when they do certain things, there's just a ton of moving parts, but one of the things they did was in their cell blocks, besides just using numbers or letters, they used colors, because they found that was easier for the staff to identify where they were when something happened or where an inmate was. So there's just, like I said, a million moving parts that we can take note of. Next slide, if there is, I think that was it. So I'd be happy to answer your questions now about what we've been doing, or any time in the future, feel free to hit me up and ask.
Okay. Go to councilors, and we'll start with Councilor Iverson.
Thank you for the photos, and it's all very interesting. I was wondering if you could give like a very brief update on the transition team that's here in Monroe County.
One thing I forgot to mention in this, it's happened since this, but the transition team is still being formed, or still, you know, dealing with hiring the current staff, the new staff that you guys approved. So our team had, the transition team hasn't grown yet necessarily from where we were in the last couple of months. We did do interviews last week or week before for the construction manager position. We had three bidders on that. We interviewed them here in this room publicly and recorded it for the public to be a part of, and super transparent. We've had several meetings since then, and I anticipate we'll make a decision, announce a decision by the end of this week sometime. It's probably forthcoming. So in my mind, that's a huge step forward. Maybe it's a baby step, but it feels like a huge step to me, because I love progress, and I think we're on the right path with that.
Great. Thank you for that transparency. I think that's important in this community, and I think that's great to hear you moving forward, even with interviews. That's a good step in the right direction.
Thank you.
Councilor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks for the update. Appreciate it very much. And I'm wondering if you could tell us what the next steps are?
There are a lot of next steps.
Okay, just a few.
We'll continue to tour a couple of facilities. We toured Montgomery County last Friday. It had come up in the initial, I did outreach early on, some of the groups I've spoken to, that they liked that facility for some, the use of solar panels and some fencing and things. Knowing what I know now, that wouldn't have been the top of our list going forward, because I don't foresee us using that layout again. I don't, the use of fencing and some things that we probably won't go with. So I'm, sorry, I'm going backwards on you there. Going forward, we're going to continue to tour facilities of correctional facilities locally and learn from their lessons they've experienced. In the next, in about two weeks, we're going to a company called Norix in Chicago with the architect. I think some local politicians are going. Real-time detention will take us on those tours of that facility. They produce furniture for correctional facilities, and some other products that I think were in use in Franklin County, Ohio, you saw in there. And I think we've had a couple here to test out prior to my time, but they show us how they manufacture that stuff, how it's longer-lasting, very heavy to move, so it can't be used as a weapon and things like that. So we have tours like that. There's some training conferences coming up. There's just, there's, again, it kind of runs the gamut of manufacturers, facilities, training. We will start the programming relatively soon, I think, on the justice complex portion, I believe is where we're leaning. But we have meetings on that coming up with DLZ, the architects, and RQW, the consultants. So I think that's a quick snapshot. There's probably a lot of things I'm missing, but that kind of gives you an overview.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Grass? All right, we always appreciate the updates.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's good to see you. Thank you very much. I also know we had a departmental update from Linda Brady, our Chief Probation Officer. If you want to come on up, welcome. Do you have someone you're introducing to us today? We always like that.
Sit here?
Yeah, absolutely. Welcome.
Thank you. So thank you for letting me have a minute to speak here. My name's Linda Brady. I'm the Chief Probation Officer for the Monroe Circuit Court. And you probably all know that Troy Hatfield, my Deputy Chief Probation Officer, is leaving our department. His last day is next Tuesday, and so I've replaced him with Anthony Williams. So I want to introduce him and let him take a minute to tell you about himself.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Just a little background on me and where I come from. I graduated from Ball State University in 2003, and immediately after crossing the graduation stage, I became a probation officer in Marion County, and I stayed there until 2021, when I came to Monroe County. In Marion County, I served in every possible role that you could imagine, but left there as the Court Alcohol and Drug Director to come here and replace Susan Allen back in 2021. And now I'm replacing Troy. So I used to say I was the new Susan Allen, and now I'll get used to saying I'm the new Troy Hatfield.
Eventually, we all know who we all are, but based on who we replaced. Well, welcome. The councilors, do you have any questions or comments?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Welcome. And we're always excited to still anyone from Ball State, Marion County. We have a little history with that, so thank you so much for being here. Anything else while you're here?
I'm number 10, so I'll see you again, but thank you for letting me.
All right, we'll see you shortly. Thank you so much, and welcome. Any other departments wishing to make an update, either here or on Teams? All right, we're going to keep moving then. Thank you very much. Councilors, before we move on to Item 6, I just wanted to note, an item for the record here, the auditor has asked the following creation of new lines be read into the record pertaining to items from prior council meetings this year, where additional appropriations were approved by council, but the statement regarding the creation of new account lines was not reflected in the motion. So I'm going to put this on the record so that we have that per the auditor's request. Please note, the auditor's office moved forward with creating and appropriating account lines as council intended, and no action is needed at this time. We just want the minutes to reflect that this has been read in. So from the March 26th meeting, account line 8178-3000640 is National Priority Grant contractual for emergency management, as well as 9130-20011-9624, Cerian Services Program Other Supplies for the Health Department. From our April 9th meeting, I've got a few here, so bear with me. 4802-30112, Aviation Building Hangar Repair and Maintenance for Aviation. 8103-17101, Operation Pullover Grant Overtime for Sheriff. 1233-17101, Correctional Lit Overtime, as well as 1233-17203, Correctional Lit Shift Pay, and 1233-17208, Correctional Lit Uniforms. 1233-17310, Correctional Lit Training Bonus. And then final two lines, 1233-18101, Correctional Lit FICA, as well as 1233-18201, Correctional Lit Perf. We've read those into the records to reflect that per the auditor's request. Okay? All right, let's move on to Item Number 6, which is Council Liaison Updates. Councilors, any of you have updates? Councilor Iverson.
Yes, Mr. President, I have two updates for us today. Speaking of the auditor, the opioid settlement application is now live on the county's website. Any area nonprofit or county department that is engaged in helping fight the substance use disorder pandemic is eligible to apply on that website. We have the timelines for application submission periods. This current period is going on now through June 30th, and so you can apply on the website there in the auditor's site. And I would note that we probably need to get that onto the main page. That's not there right now. It's a little tricky to find. The second update that I bring to you is an Earth Day update. Happy Earth Day for everybody. Tomorrow's commissioner meeting, Victoria Seest, who is our McKinney Climate Fellow, will provide information about the Monroe County Climate Resilience Plan. And I believe that the commissioners will be entertaining a proclamation to recognize all the hard work that she and the other McKinney Climate Fellows have done in honor of Earth Day 2024. So congratulations to her.
Thank you very much. Councilor Munson.
Yes. I'm sorry, I'm not prepared with this microphone. What's that?
They take a second.
Is it on?
Make sure you're green.
Here it is. First update is in regard to the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Committee, which will meet again this coming Friday, and our work will concern preparation of annual reports for, that will be presented to the council. So, and secondly, the Sophia Travis Grants Committee has applications for citizen membership, and we will meet as soon as we can get the quorum together and then prepare to bring our recommendation back to you all. Thank you.
We'll go to Councilor McKinn.
I just want to ask, so just so I understand, you are still seeking a citizen member, or you have?
We have, we have two applications.
You got, okay.
And I'm, it, all of a sudden, we have two when we had nothing.
Excellent.
I'm very glad.
I was just admonished to look at my email. I will get on it.
And you all can look at your email. So thank you.
Any other councilors with reports? Awesome. One thing I'll just note is a meeting of the Long-Term Finance Committee is this Friday in the council HR office, so we will look forward to that. All right, we're going to move off Council Liaison Reports and move on to the Consent Agenda Items.
Counsel, I move to approve the following consent agenda items for April 23rd. The March 12th and 16th Council Summary Minutes as presented. The jail's request for the creation of account line 18001, Full-Time Self Insurance, and Fund 1233-000. Should that be another zero? Okay, 0000, Correctional Lit. And the Health Department's request for the creation of account line 32410, Personal Healthcare, and Fund 1159-0000, Health Fund.
Second.
Any questions from counsel on the consent agenda?
Just a clarification that it's March 26th minutes. Is that correct? Got it. 12th and 26th, got it.
Okay.
So I'll just repeat that and say the March 12th and March 26th Council Summary Minutes as presented, for the record.
Do we have any questions or from, on the consent agenda items? Any questions from counsel? Any public comment on the consent agenda items? If you have a public comment, come forward to the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote in just a second.
You can do voice vote.
I can? Let's do a voice vote then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Awesome. That takes us on to item, let's see.
8B.
8B.
All right, 8B, let's go. Counsel, I move to approve the jail's request for an additional appropriation and fund 1000-0380, General Fund Jail, in the amount of $110,000 in the Services category.
Second.
Thank you very much. We want to welcome up Sheriff Ruben Marte, Chief Deputy Parker, jail commanders here as well. Welcome all.
Good evening, counsel. Hope everyone's doing well. This should be kind of fairly quick for us, I think. In the spirit of moving forward, on the actual advance correctional health contract, I believe Phil Parker, Chief Phil Parker, has some updates on that, in that area.
Okay.
Are we on? Never can hear this thing. I think we kind of covered the whole nuts and bolts of this, so really, I don't know if we have anything further to add, other than we do have the contract over with County Legal. They've looked at it and made some very, very minor recommendations, mainly the start date. It had a January 1 start date. Obviously, here we're in April, so I think we're going to, you know, make sure that we put that into play whenever these positions come on. But other than that, Molly, did you have anything you wanted to add on the contract part of it?
I don't think so. The changes we're recommending are pretty minor.
Okay. All right. Anything else? And on this one, Michelle, you had something you wanted to note about the available revenue in the current line. in the current line.
I just wanted to say that typically what we do is ask departments to use up their current appropriations, and then after you exhausted that, made any kind of in-house transfers or category transfers, then come back and ask for an additional appropriation. Because currently, right now, in your account, as of today's date, that particular account line has $1.1 million in it. So I recommend, you know, based on what you want to do, I don't believe at this time they currently need that additional appropriation. But again, that's what I see in the past practice as what we've asked other departments to do.
Yeah, and if I can speak very briefly to that. When we started this venture, the price tag was higher, the time of period was longer, and it involved adding a service that we weren't currently receiving. So we felt very much obligated to not just go out, you know, push a contract and get a big surprise here at the end of the year. So, you know, I think given the circumstances of how we have, you know, time has lapsed. And if you remember, when we submitted our budget, we submitted it for about 1.9 million, and that was to cover all of these, and the council approved part of that, got us up to 1.5, I think we budgeted 1.5 plus for the year. And then we were gonna make up the rest with the correctional lit. And we, I think Kim may be exactly right, we may be at the position where we can kind of watch that track out, and now that we're down to about 110,000, there may or may not be a need for an additional appropriation, depending on how things track. If we have a good experience with our outside medical care, that need for that appropriation may fall off, and then we'll budget the full amount for this contract for next year. I will have to say, I always feel obligated to warn you that we're not off to a real good start with outside medical care in the facility. I just jotted down a few things here. We've had, we've had a couple of high-risk pregnancies there in the facility. We've had one individual with a stroke, and we've got someone with a cardiac condition right now that, you know, is requiring pre-regular outside medical care. So it just shows you how volatile it is. So I just wanna be very fair to the council that this could fall off. We won't need an additional appropriation at all to fund these three positions, but it may be back like we were last year. We came in and asked, I think, for 470,000 for an additional appropriation.
I go to counsel questions or comments on all this. Counselor McKinn.
Thank you very much. First of all, I, you know, I understand Michelle's point, and that is typically what we ask, but I think we've been discussing this for a long time, over a number of months. And I do think that, you know, I'm interested in making it clear that the council, or at least I do support this particular expenditure, so I plan to vote yes. So just so I understand, is this for a calendar year, or is it just from now through the end of the calendar? I'm sorry, a year, or is it now to the end of the calendar?
It's whenever we hire those positions. So roughly, let's say, May 1st, at the end of the calendar year, is what this is designed to carry us through this additional appropriation.
Okay. Thank you.
Other counsel comments?
Yes. Is this, this is a change in the contract at this point?
Yes.
Okay. The reason why I'm saying, according to change in legislation, in order, we have to ask County Legal, don't wanna play lawyer here, but I believe the way it's set up is that once, if the Sheriff's Department gets the appropriation, gets the nod from the council, then they have the permission to move forward, even if they didn't get permission totally from the commissioners. And so the way we've done it in the past will be different from the way we do it in the future. If...
Correct.
Is that, is that as you understand it?
Yeah, and I mean, service contracts have always been kind of in dispute there, and then there was a case, you know, not get into the giggle weeds there up in Lake County that kind of resulted that service contracts that the sheriff needed to impose to carry out his constitutional duties, he could sign those independently, as long as it was funded. And that's what this legislation was designed to do here that's coming up in July 1. That's my understanding, yes.
Right, and you've been given a lot of heads up from the county council, saying that we support this, and so now we have to vote on actually making it final that we did support it, so they can move forward. That's the way I understand the legislation.
Okay. Do you wanna ask County Attorney, any of this, we're here in legislation, legal vote? What are your thoughts?
I will have to review the legislation that takes place, takes effect in July. It's been a while since I looked at it, so I don't wanna speak to what the changes are without reviewing it first. But I think as of right now, I do not think, I think the sheriff can enter the contract without commissioner approval. I don't know what the new legis, how the new legislation impacts the current status. So as of right now, I think that the sheriff couldn't afford without commissioner approval, but I thought the plan was to go ahead and ask the commissioners anyhow.
And let me ask this follow-up. If on this question of just this appropriation, if we voted for this this evening and they did not need it at the end of the year, that would revert? Okay.
Yeah.
Other comments, Counsel Wiltz?
I just wanted to clarify because we have talked about this a lot, but maybe not everybody in the room or watching that has been involved in the conversation. And this money is specifically to help fund three new positions through this contract. And the external costs that you're referring to, Chief Deputy, is not what this is for, but those are costs related to the same contract that we would be paying out of the same pot of money.
Correct.
As they come up, yeah.
These positions will be paid out of the medical line item that pays for the nursing staff, in-house care. So these, you know, for example, we have two mental health professionals. One of these positions is an additional mental health professional, so it'd be paid out of that same line item. The external costs are, there's a, it's kind of complicated. I went through the pool. There's included in that contract is a pool of money that if you don't go over this specific amount, and I have to look at it, I've got it in here, I think it was, I think it may be 40,000 on prescription and 40,000, and it's a rollover pool. I can look the numbers up if you want. But long and short of it, is it, as long as you don't go over that, that's also paid into contract. When you hit your pool monies and go in excess of them, that's when we have to come to you for additional appropriations.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we kind of, we're talking about apples and apples.
Apples and other kinds of apples, right?
There are many apples. All right. Other comments from counsel? Counselor Hawke?
Just to be clear, according to our information here, this is to pay for those three additional positions. And that's something we have discussed, you know, so I certainly support it.
All right. Seeing no other questions or comments from counsel, we'll go to public comments on this. And so if you have a comment, either come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. We'll be glad to hear from you. All right. Seeing none, Counselor McKinn.
And I apologize, because just, I don't think you've actually said for the record in this meeting what the three positions are. Just so that the public knows, can you just repeat them? I know we've talked about it ad nauseam, but...
So one is for mental, mental health, counsel. Another one is for substance abuse, and then the other one, not to wrap around, reentry, reentry coordinator.
Thank you.
Those caps, it's for the medical part, the cap, it's a rolling cap of 10,450 a month, which equates to 125,400 a year. And then the prescription pool, it's 40,500. So those are the, those are the caps that I was talking about, just for clarification.
Okay. All right. We've gone to public comments, counsel comments. Any other counselor comments? I see...
Molly, did you?
Looks like Molly comments coming.
Did you need to say something? I don't think so. I was just going to read what the contract had them titled as, but it's exactly what the sheriff said they were.
Okay. Awesome. All right. Let's go ahead then to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, we'll go to, thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
I looked down, I was like, oh, there's no more for the sheriff.
That was fascinating.
Good to see you, sir. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.
Let's move to item number nine, requests from the Board of Commissioners.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for the creation of a new account line 30083 Opioid Amethyst House and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation and fund 1237-0000 Opioid Restricted in the amount of 93,000 in the Services category.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Angie Purdy, Commissioner's Office.
I was just, it's actually...
It may not be on.
Okay. So you guys actually approved this appropriation last year, and it was kind of at the end of the year, and it didn't get, it didn't get disbursed to Amethyst House, and they are desperately in need of these funds. So I'm asking if you could please make that appropriation for Amethyst this year.
Questions, comments from counsel? I have one. Why weren't they distributed?
I think it was a matter of timing. We were working on an MOU, which we were trying to figure out what the opioid, little group, what they're wanting to see. We never got that, so things just kind of failed.
I just remember the urgency.
Yeah.
At the request, so I guess that's why it was, okay. Questions from counsel. Counsel Iverson?
Thank you, Mr. President. And can you refresh my memory? This is for the mental health services that they want, they're providing, not for a capital improvement purpose?
Correct, yeah. They're actually, I believe they have a part-time physician who is also assists them with their medication-assisted treatment, which they offer, also a full-time master's level social worker, and they're going to increase their co-occurring disorder treatment and trauma-informed care. And I believe the last thing they were going to do, I don't know if that remained in the final decision, but they were going to be providing residents with scholarships to assist with GED or job training.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the public. If you have comments, come forward here in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Decker?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Go now to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's request for the creation of a new account line 28242 Harrisburg Firework Show and simultaneously approve an additional appropriation and fund 4932-0000 Food and Beverage Tax Counting Portion in the amount of $6,000 in the Supplies category.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Purdy.
Thank you, and I've added to me, this is Mr. Paul Swain, is that right?
String.
String, string. And he is in charge of the Harrisburg Heritage Days. He had approached the Board of Commissioners requesting some assistance on the food and beverage, using food and beverage funds for the Heritage Days. They approved recommending approval, and that went to the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, who also voted favorably for this. So we are just asking for that appropriation to occur, and he's here to answer any questions you may have.
Can you tell us a little bit more about what this appropriation does?
Sure. We are looking this year at the festival to add fireworks. Judah Heritage Days is, they are no longer gonna be putting on their festival, so we were hoping to move their fireworks show that they normally do to Heritage Days. Be the, it'll be in the 18th, be the last thing we do at the festival. Think it's really going to be a way to pull in a lot, lot more people, a lot of people that don't normally come to the festival, to hold a crowd a little bit longer, and just really, really promote the town.
Thank you very much. Go to comments, questions from counselors. Counselor McKinn.
So, and I feel really bad about this comment, but I feel like I need to make it. I do think this sounds like a really fun project, and hopefully will bring a lot of visitors to Harrisburg. And I suspect, however, that although this will largely be a symbolic vote, I'm not gonna be able to vote in favor, and here's why. When we first passed the food and beverage tax, we, and that includes me, told the public that while the city had agreed to spend its share of the tax on expanding the convention center, we in the county would spend our share on tourism-related projects outside the convention center in downtown Bloomington. This project certainly fits within this schema. But recently, certain members of the Bloomington City Council proposed diverting city food and beverage tax revenues away from the convention center, expansion to other projects. I have been particularly and publicly critical of this attempted diversion. Unfortunately, the majority of the city council so far has remained in support of the convention center project, and recently voted to approve the requested budget for the CIB. And I thank the city council for that support for this long-planned project. But given that the funding is statutorily required to be spent, quote, "to finance, refinance, construct, operate, or maintain a convention center, a conference center, or related tourism or economic development projects," I just can't support the secondary and supportive uses of the funds, the "or related" part, until I'm convinced that the primary use, the convention center, is fully funded. Hopefully, that'll happen yet later this year, as the CIB does its great work to get this project under bond. So although I think this is a great project, and I otherwise would totally support it, for that reason, I think I'm gonna have to vote no.
Thank you very much, Counsel McKinn. Counselor Hawke?
Yes, so are you suggesting then that if the commissioners wish to use any of this for that quarry park they wanted to do, that you would not support that either?
Not until the convention center is under bombed.
Okay, I mean, I see where you're coming from. I really regret that this wasn't asked to be spent out of the innkeeper's tax, because that would be very appropriate, to use the innkeeper's tax for this. We have in years past, some of you might remember my friend Bill Finch, who made sure that we were able to pull some money from that innkeeper's tax to help out the Elsville Fall Festival one year, had Morrison Wright come forward, and we had a meeting and arrived at that. And so I don't know how anybody's expected to vote against Harrisburg. After all, we'll never get another fish fry if we do that. But I understand your point of view, because we don't want to look like we're dithering around with this either. Why is it you're waiting until tonight to discuss this, so we could have maybe tried to do some...
Well, this is the first that this has come up in a public meeting for us.
I get it.
And I mean, the situation with the city is evolving. I mean, I really hope it moves forward, and this is just, I just, I wanted to make a point that has nothing to do with, it is no shade on Harrisburg at all.
I absolutely understand where you're coming from. I do.
Counsel Munson?
So there was a public meeting about this request of the food and beverage...
So there was a public meeting about this request of the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission, at which time the Commissioners brought their request, and it was supported at that meeting. I do think the members of the Tax Advisory Commission are fully in support of the convention center expansion as well. For my own part, I do think it's appropriate to have a small expenditure go to Harrisburg. I would, I would look favorably upon other small expenditures to other places. And I wouldn't turn to the convention and visitors' revenue that comes from the hotel taxes, because that is already fully slated to, to the convention center budget. And while it's possible, I think, I think the convention center looks on that budget as, as being predictable. The food and beverage tax will continue to do well, as I'm sure, and I think the six thousand dollars is a small proportion of the county's revenue. And if, if the Commissioners wish to spend other portions of the county's revenue for the convention center, they can bring that request to the Tax Advisory Commission, and we'll discuss it and see where it goes up there.
I've got Councillor Wiltz next, and then I'll come back.
Well, I agree completely with Councillor Munson. I agree completely with Councillor Munson, and just to, to make a finer point on it, the, the food and beverage tax was established to fund a convention center. That part is true and, and important to keep in mind. But it created two distinct pots of money. One to be used for the convention center, and one to be used by the county for other projects that are related to tourism, and this certainly falls within that purview. And I, I feel like it is a great use of, of this amount of money from that fund.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes. As required by the legislation, the use of, the planned use for these dollars was to be turned into the state. And when I read over, that, as you remember, Commissioners did not come and say, oh, let's sit down and discuss this together. They just sort of moved forward. And did not, it, it didn't look as though they were planning to use it for this. So will this, will that plan now need to have an amendment that goes to the state to say that we want to use it for other things? Which I'm, I'm not saying I wouldn't support that, but this is, we have to look at what the legislation told us to do and what actually was turned in, which we didn't really get to have a discussion about. And hopefully, that won't happen in future.
I've got Councillor McKim next.
I actually just wanted to respond to Councillor Wiltz's comment. First of all, I agree with Councillor Munson. I agree with everything you said. But I did want to make it clear that the statute doesn't distinguish between the county's portion and the city's portion in terms of its uses. The language is identical. Yes, there are two clauses, but that the language that I had read earlier about the convention center, conference center, or related, is, is identical between the city and county.
It, it was our agreement that it was an agreement, that we signed that said this house can be split up.
Councillor Munson?
So a point of clarification, and that is that both the city and the county had to file a, a plan for the food and beverage tax use for the year 2024. They did this in December, and the wording in the plan is as general as the, and other related. So this, the fireworks show goes into other related tourism. And it is also how a loan program was established in the city to help out struggling food and beverage establishments during the, during the pandemic. And the county actually didn't have a loan program, but had a grant program, and that was other related. I hope that helps.
Councillor Iverson?
So my, my thinking on this is that I, I'll be voting in favor of this, because I think we need more third spaces. I think we need more gathering spaces outside of the home and work for people to gather and be with one another. And I think this is a great opportunity to do just that in a space that probably people don't go to very often, as you mentioned in, in your remarks, and it'll be a wonderful time for people to get down there and, and see everything you have to offer. So for those reasons, I'll be supporting this.
Other comments? Councillor Hawke?
Yes, and. To add to that, when you go to Harrisburg, the, the local arts and crafts people there have things. I still use some of the things that I bought years ago. Whoever made that wonderful thing that I use on my bed that warm. So I'm just saying, it is a way to help our arts people, the crafts people, and so forth. So I'm going to support this, but I do think that we need to take another look at what was sent up to the state to make sure that we are doing, if any changes have to be made, we'll do that.
I see Councillor Munson, and then Chair's got comments.
So while we have Mr. Strain here, I would like him to announce the dates for Harrisburg Heritage Days, and just give us a quick rundown, so the public can know.
Sure. It is May seventeenth and eighteenth. We'll have, on May seventeenth, we're kicking off, basically in the afternoon. Our carnival rides will be open, the shuttles will be running, the fish fry will be, will be going. We can't miss the fish fry. We'll have bands on stage starting at six o'clock, going all the way till nine. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, ten o'clock. Starting Saturday morning, we'll have our baby contest, and then we have DNRs putting on an exposition, as well as I believe we have a magic show coming. We have our tractor pull. It's a children's, well, naturally, we'll have the parade right after that, which is, they tell me it's looking like over a hundred units in the parade right now, weather permitting. We have the tractor pull after that. We have a company that puts on the tractor pull for us, so we're having a children's tractor pull, and then an adult pedal tractor pull. And the adult pedal tractor pull is, it's open to all adults. It is.
He looks ready to use.
You, you need to come see it. We're also, Monroe County Fire Protection District is partnering with us, and we have a trophy for whichever house has the best pull. And we're actually now working with the Sheriff's Department to see if they can get involved. And then I told them if we get enough people from there, we'll have their champion pull against the fire department. We, we're trying to have a little competition between them. I believe somebody termed it guns and hoses. So we're hoping that is, that comes off. As soon as we, after that, we'll have two other bands on stage. One is, our big band for the day is the Dynamics, which locally, everybody loves them. And then hopefully, at ten o'clock, we'll cap it off with our fireworks show.
That was quite the pitch.
I love it.
I've got, Chair's got comments. Was there any other? I, what's that? I, I did, I wanted to say, first of all, we'd love to have you back more often, because anytime Harrisburg is here, it's awesome. I, I want to say, Councillor McKim's comments are very strong comments, because we're in a precarious, difficult position with the convention center. And I, there's a part of me that goes in his direction on this, very wholeheartedly, on his arguments. I struggle, though, with this one, because the things that you've heard described about this wonderful town. When I first got into office and took Lee Jones' place midterm, meaning nobody knows who I am, the first town I went door to door in was Harrisburg. I think we talked. And it was the first place in this community I've ever knocked doors, and nobody asked what my political party was. They just wanted to meet me, and they were very nice. And I did see some family, of course, because it's that part of the county. That festival is awesome. That parade, which I've done for years, is beautiful, it's seamless. I hope, I'm, I can still get a flow, right?
Yes.
I usually get in at the last second. It's awesome. And one of the things that makes me sway towards voting for this is if ever the food and beverage tax was designed to get tourism or people to places they may not otherwise go, this might be it.
Yeah.
And that is, it's a, it's a, it's a beautiful, beautiful festival in so many ways. I do think that we need to make sure that everything we're doing keeps the resolve to our colleagues downtown about the convention center. And I hope that we can do that as well, but I, I think that this attraction to this and this, we're losing festivals. I mean, you, you talked about Judah's fireworks show going away. Things are changing. Things are harder. We talk all the time about how things are harder for smaller towns, not in just southern Indiana, but Monroe County. So I see eventually more people coming to Harrisburg than not to live. Now, Harrisburg may not want to hear that, or Smithville may not want to hear it, but I see these towns being alternatives for some of our housing issues and other things. So I, I, with good caution taken from Councillor McKim's strong arguments, I'm going to vote for this appropriation. I do hope, though, that Commissioners will look at long-term how these requests might manifest. We have a lot of fireworks shows, we have a lot of other things going on. I want to make sure we're not picking winners and losers with that process, and that we're keeping that focus to the conventions that are in the process. Okay? Any other comments or questions? Let's go to comments or questions or comments from the public. If you have a comment, come forward in the Nat U bill, or raise your hand on teams. All right. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call.
Councillor Decker?
Yes.
Councillor Crossley?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor McKim?
No, but I promise to come and spend my own money.
You will be well.
Okay. Motion passes six to one.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hope to see you all in May.
Thank you.
We're now going to go to item number ten, the probation officer. Ms. Brady's going to come back up.
Council, I move to approve the probation department's request to amend the 2024 salary ordinance and fund one thousand dash zero two two six general fund probation, account line seventeen eight zero one, part-time, amending the maximum range amount from forty-two dollars and forty-six cents to forty-four dollars fifty-nine cents hourly, with an effective date of April twenty-first, 2024.
Second.
Ms. Brady?
Thank you. Again, Linda Brady, Chief Probation Officer. This is a salary ordinance request to be able to hire Troy Hatfield, our current Deputy Chief Probation Officer, who's leaving us next week, to have him work part-time to help train Anthony Williams, his replacement. Troy has a, a new job that starts May first, so he won't be able to, to give a lot of time to us, but he, he's willing to work up to five hours a week somewhere in that neighborhood to help Anthony learn how to program Quest, among other things, do budget projections, and all the different things you see when he comes before you. And so this is so that we're going to be able to pay him out of our part-time line item. This is not, obviously, an additional appropriation request. That's something that we will be bringing back in May to talk about that, and talking to our council liaisons, hopefully before then. Any questions?
Councillors got questions?
Always support having this kind of overlap whenever it's available to us, especially when a long-term employee leaves.
Thank you.
I seem to recall the last few years, this became a thing that we did, and it was new to us then, it's best practice is now.
Yeah. Actually, Anthony did that when Susan Allen was leaving. She was our long-term court alcohol and drug program director, and, and so when he came from another county, he had a lot to learn, and so Susan stayed, and there was overlap that you all approved, and that worked out really well, having him be able to do that. In this case, it's going to be Anthony's going to have to learn Troy's job, and then he's going to have to train his replacement at the same time. So it's going to be challenging, but we will get through it. That's just part of how organizations grow. Thank you.
Thanks for your patience through. I know you're, you're smiling through it more than maybe it lets on. Any other comments or questions? Let's go to comments from the public.
Just a quick question. Sorry about that. Um, yeah, Troy definitely has some big shoes to fill, and Anthony seems like he's ready to go for the challenge. The only quick question that I have is, just out of curiosity, since you mentioned that Troy would stay on for at least five hours a week, do you have a rough timeline as to when you would think that, you know, Anthony would be ready to go? Because obviously, with Troy leaving, this creates a domino effect of, you know, all of these different types of things, scenarios happening. But I'm just curious to know, how long do you think it would take for the training to, from start to finish?
Well, first thing, Troy, he hasn't even started his new job, so he's guessing that he might, he might have this much time, and he's thinking, well, he has a lunch hour every day, and, and that sort of thing. He doesn't know what else is going to be required of him. He may get sent, because this is a national job. This is, this is not a Bloomington-based job. So he, he's saying he's hoping to be able to do that many hours, but he doesn't know. So a lot of it depends on when, once he's in that job, figuring out how much time he does have to devote to Anthony and, and training him. And the other thing is budgets, that, as some of you know, we've got in the neighborhood, last time I counted, I think we had twenty-three budgets for the probation department. That's a lot of budgets to try to figure, you know, with grants and all. So Troy has said he, his goal would be to stay through budgeting for the next year, to help us with projections and help train Anthony to be able to do that. And, and I'm trying to train the younger generation in my department, because I'm not going to be a long-termer either. I've, you know, I've been going on forty years here, so this is not an announcement. But, you know, forty years is a long time to be, you know, in, in one job, so we've got to start training that, that next generation. So we don't really know for sure, but he's thinking at least through the budget submissions. So does that help? And we'll know a lot more once he starts his, his actual job and, and figuring out how much time he, he feels like he can, can give to us. The other thing is, it isn't just those things. We also have to deal with Quest programming. He was our Quest programmer, and to learn to write HTML and to be a programmer, I mean, Anthony was trained as an alcohol and drug professional, not as a, you know, a, a computer programmer. So this is going to be quite a transition for not just the budgets, but the things you don't necessarily see when you ask for, for statistics and what's going on in the probation department. That's the only reason we're able to give that, is because Quest is a very robust system, but it has to be programmed, and we don't have a full-time programmer or even a part-time programmer, you know, on, on staff at this point. So.
And on that one, no, no need to rush off. We, we're having a good time. I said, no need to rush off. Everybody, you can note there. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Comments from the public, come forward in the Nat U bill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor McKim?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson? Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Have a good night. All right, that takes us to item 11, a 11, pardon me, a request from the Health Department.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request for an additional appropriations and fund 8126-9624 Futures Clinic in the amount of $50,000 in the personnel category, $5,640.32 in the supplies category, and $200 in the services category for a total appropriation of $55,840.32.
Second.
We need to allow Lori to speak on.
T S D, can you promote Lori Kelly, please?
Take just a moment while our Health Administrator is given access to talk.
Good evening. So this is just a request we received in an additional award amount, an amendment to the original Title X contract of $50,000. This is just to help cover a shortage that we had in the original grant award. So we just need this to get this approved.
All right. Questions or comments for Ms. Kelly? Counselor McKim?
Yes, just how far ahead is Futures funded?
What, what do you mean like ahead?
Well, tell, tell when. Tell when is it funded currently?
Until March 31st of 2024. So that was the Title X grant. We are anticipating the TANF grant. That typically begins April 1st. We have not received that award, but we have not been provided with the paperwork either to submit a budget request for that at this point.
Okay, so it's actually run out. We are actually out of.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Yes, that is correct. So the clinic is currently running in the red. It's in a deficit. And we are trying to work on submitting insurance reimbursements to help recover some of the funds.
Okay, I do see that in the notes. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from counsel? Or, yes, Counsel Munson?
As one of the liaisons to Health Department, I got to discuss this with Lori and had appreciated that opportunity because grants don't always come in exactly when we need them or want them. And so she has been very carefully shuffling and managing with what funds she has available. And she's in one of those sticky places right now, waiting on a grant to come in that normally would have come in earlier. So hang in there, Lori Kelly, and we'll cross our fingers for speedy action on those grants.
Thank you very much, Counselor Munson. Other questions or comments from counsel? Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the public. If you have comments, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
That takes us to item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Health Department's request to create new account lines and simultaneously amend the 2024 salary ordinance and add account lines 10071 Nurse Practitioner, 10187 Clinic Manager, and 10188 Licensed Practical Nurse and fund 1159-0000 Health Fund.
Second.
Ms. Kelly?
Um, yes. So just to touch on Counselor Munson. So this is one of those actions that I'm taking to establish account lines in our fund 1159 to be able to move the personnel of the Futures Family Planning Clinic into another fund as needed to help cover some of the shortage that the clinic has. The grant funding between Title X and TANF has never supported, from my understanding, the clinic entirely. So we do depend on what is referred to as program income or revenue to kind of help get us through some of those shortages. And we have been supplementing with other funds throughout the year, but this is just going to help provide us with coverage for those actual personnel lines.
Questions or comments from counsel for Ms. Kelly? Counselor McKim?
Yes. So do you currently believe that you have the amount of, you have the appropriation in that health fund to be able to cover some gap up to a certain amount of time presumably?
Um, for about a month.
Okay, thank you.
It's challenging.
Okay. Other comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll go to comments from the public. If you have a comment, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Okay, that takes us to item 12.
Counsel, I move to approve the Auditor's Request for the creation of a new account line, 38350 Grant Distribution, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation and fund 1213-0000 Gaukasa in the amount of $83,738 in the services category.
Second.
Okay. Auditor, what comments do you have for us? Welcome.
Thank you. We, the Auditor's Office has traditionally not requested an additional appropriation for this. It's just a pass-through. However, we're kind of streamlining our processes and fine-tuning that. So these will be appropriated moving forward with your approval, of course.
Thank you very much. Comments or questions from counsel? Counselor McKim?
Only that I appreciate the opportunity to have the counsel hear this and vote on the appropriation. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. We agree. We want the transparency, so.
I'd add to that comment and say the auditor does a really strong job at occasionally reminding us of things that we need to be very transparent about in the public. And I appreciate those reminders. I wish I were quick with the responses to her, as her ability to get them to us. All right. Seeing none, let's see no more comments. Let's go to comments from the public. Any, anyone that wishes to make a comment in the public, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
All right, item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the Auditor's Request for the creation of a new account line, 38350 Grant Distribution, and to simultaneously approve an additional appropriation and fund 8106-0000 Rural Transit in the amount of $310,216 in the services category.
Second.
Great. So this is the same situation, different grant. So again, just requesting your approval so we can pass this through.
Comments or questions from counsel? Counselor McKim?
I'm sorry, and who is the funding agency on this? Is this a federal grant?
It is a federal grant. I will have to provide the funding agency at a later date, if that's okay.
Thanks.
One thing I will just note, I'm always pleased to see something on the agenda that's got Rural Transit on it because I think we need to keep that very fresh in the discussions of every public body in this community. And a lot of times it comes up as a question, what does Monroe County do for services that are, you know, not just our courts and not just our correction center and not just some of the things that folks know us by. And these are some of the things that folks also know us by, along with that Health Net. And I would love to see all these outside investments that are crucial to our community get talked about a whole lot more door-to-door, up here, out there, paper, online, you name it. Because folks need to know about these services. Because if we ever lose them, we'll definitely know about those services. So we got to have them. All right, I'll be quiet. Any other comments? Seeing none, let's go to comments from the public. Raise your hand on teams or come forward in the Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
If I may just quickly clarify, this grant is actually both federal and state. It has a federal grant fund number because that's the way we've been directed to proceed, but just for clarification purposes.
Okay, thanks. And importantly, it's good to reiterate, all the grants our departments, outside organizations bring into this community, were we to have to replace them with county dollars, we would either A, be hard-pressed to do so or unable. And I just want to salute every single person that makes these things come in because they are huge for this community and they're awesome. So thank you. All right. Public comment, we've not done that. If the public want to comment, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Item C.
Counsel, I move to approve the Auditor's Request of a fund-to-fund transfer of cash from Fund 4513-0000 2013 Redevelopment Bond in the amount of $61,642.66 and from Fund 4923-0000 Westside TIF Debt 2013 Bond in the amount of $190,700 for a total cash transfer of $252,342.66 and Fund 4920-0000 Westside Econ Development Richland Township TIF.
Second.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, upon closeout of this grant, we are simply moving the remaining funds to the appropriate TIF fund so they can be utilized.
Okay, questions, comments from counsel? Counselor McKim?
Man, did you mean bond or grant?
Um, the RDC bond.
Bond.
Yes. I'm sorry. Did I say grant? I apologize.
So this is basically like when we take all our coins that we gather into the jar, when we go to the coin star machine and convert it into something that actually.
Exactly.
We do that a lot. Yeah.
All favorite.
Anyone else have good thoughts? Everybody up here knew what that was. Let's go to comments from the public. If you have a comment, come forward in the Nat U Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McCam?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you. This takes us to item 13 on the agenda. And this is a request from the council office. Well, it's a request from the council that Michelle is performing here. And it's our quarterly levy funds summary. This came about as a request from us. And Michelle, I'm going to pass it over to you.
Um, what I did was I provided a report that, of the levy funds and some of funds that the council has requested in the past. And with that, it was a, I just kind of gave you a brief overview of the receipts, the expenditures, and the appropriation, you know, and then the cash balance for each one of those funds. So I didn't know, I'm hoping you guys looked at it, but I didn't know if that is exactly what you wanted with regards to a quarterly report. You know, I, I'll just, you know, take some guidance, you know, that kind of thing. But just.
Thank you. And thanks for working to address what council's asked for. So Counselor Iverson?
So just some feedback. Number one, I think this is incredibly helpful for the public and I think probably for me too. There's a lot of information that gets shoved past our desk and this is helpful. Number two, when folks go to the agenda where this is located, all of the funds are hyperlinked to the individual page. That is very, very helpful. And that just kind of helps the ease of going around to all these different funds. So that's a good use of technology to make the complicated things that we do a little simpler.
And I'll just share my screen just briefly. This is the general fund. And here, you can see as of the quarter end, you know, that, you can see right that 32 million is how much has been brought in. And that, and if you look at the report ahead above, it will give you, you know, the different topic, you know, or titles, I guess, for those lines. You know, where did that amount come from? You know, was it refunds? Was it, you know, property tax? Was it, you know, whatever, you know, that kind of thing. It also lists the appropriations for that you have approved, the expenditures that's been done, the unexpended appropriations, as well as the cash balance. So this is just a very, you know, very quick view without the detail of each fund. So.
Other comments or questions from counselors? I appreciate the report. Yeah. Thank you, Michelle. And I always appreciate all the professionalization you bring to all of this. And you chase all these things for us. I know it's not easy, but you generally smile about it all. So thanks for trying to chase it all. And thanks to auditor for doing it as well.
And I was going to say, if there are other funds that you would like to include in the next quarter, just let me know ahead of time and I'll, I'll get those included. So.
Counselor Hawke, is it a question?
Yes. As you know, we've discussed in the past, just to set this up if I can, that we will be receiving a rather large supplemental. But as Councilmember McKim and I have discussed, that we have to make sure that we don't think the whole thing is extra when we look at our financial statement because we need to know what was projected for a supplemental. And I have not seen that. Can you give that amount to me that we projected? Was that in our estimated revenue? Right.
It would have been in the line in the Form 2.
Yeah, I, I believe I provided that, but I will definitely forward that if not. So I, I'll look at my email right now. Thank you.
I know, because we went back and forth due to the other things we were working on.
Yes. If we had said we thought we were going to get X and then we get something more than that, we need to make sure we already counted on.
We already counted on it, yeah.
Any other comments or questions from counsel? Well, thanks for getting us that again for, that helps us with the problem solving that we do when we have to do it and we know we'll have to do it. So let's move on to item number 14, a request from Legal Department.
A point of order, Mr. Chair. My wife is a election day poll worker. I'm going to leave the room for this discussion. Would somebody mind texting me when the discussion votes?
I will. Thank you.
Counselor Munson? Thank you very much for noting that.
That's a good point.
Okay, let's go to item 14.
Counsel, I move to approve the request to create a new account line, 17- Counsel, I move to approve the request to create a new account line seventeen five twelve absentee board couriers and to amend the twenty-twenty-four salary ordinance and fund twelve fifteen zero zero sixty-two election fund, election board as follows. Account line seventeen five zero one inspectors not to exceed two hundred dollars per day on election day. Account line seventeen five zero two judges election not to exceed a hundred and seventy dollars, uh, a hundred and seventy-five dollars, excuse me, per day, per person on election day. Account line seventeen five zero three precinct sheriff election not to exceed a hundred and twenty-five dollars per person on election day. Account line fifteen, I'm sorry, account line seventeen five zero four clerks slash student workers election not to exceed a hundred and fifty dollars per person on election day. Account line seventeen five zero seven election worker training range thirty dollars to fifty-two dollars per day for training. Account line seventeen five zero eight absentee board counters not to exceed a hundred and seventy-five dollars per person on election day. And account line seventeen five twelve absentee board couriers not to exceed a hundred and fifty dollars paid per person on election day plus mileage.
Second.
All right. So we've got a motion and a second. Thank you very much, counselors. Any questions or comments from counsel? My understanding is this is just us formally ratifying what the commissioners adopted under their, under statute and ordinance, uh, and is the right.
Correct. The commissioners are responsible for setting the per diems for precinct election workers, absentee counters and couriers during the work session, um, last week. The commissioners adopted a ordinance amendment to make these changes to County Code, uh, two eighty-seven. Um, they will ratify that tomorrow and so these requested changes just incorporate what will be the commissioners' changes into the salary ordinance.
And we need to move quickly on this because we need to move quickly. The election day is upon us.
Yes.
All right. Other comments, questions from counsel? Invite the public, if not, to make comments or question or comments, come on forward in NatU Hill or raise your hand on teams. Seeing none, let's go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor McKim is not present. Motion passes six to zero.
Okay, thank you. That means, and B and C are not anything now, right? So we...
We got B as...
B is...
B still is.
C is the one that's...
Sorry, I forgot. We'll move on to item B.
Did you text?
And we've got Counselor McKim back. So Ms. Turner King, do you want to discuss B?
Um, if you're going to approve it, should, did I not put a motion or?
I didn't hear a motion. That's what I was waiting for.
You may not have.
I don't think we have.
We cut B.
Um, that's because I didn't put one and I apologize.
Oh, no, we cut.
Yeah.
We cut C and kept B.
Cut C.
Yeah, we cut C, we kept B, so...
Yeah, I did it backwards.
Oh, it's okay. Okay, well...
Yeah.
On the fly. Um, counsel, I mo-, um, I mo-, I move to make a motion to request to approve Resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash zero three approving the interlocal cooperation agreement.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Thank you, Ms. Turner King.
By statute, both commissioners and counsel approve interlocals. Um, the interlocal before the council tonight is, um, between the city and the council, or the city and the county pertaining to the Edward Byron Memorial Justice Assistance Grant for everyone as the JAG grant. Um, it's the leading source of federal justice funding to state and local jurisdictions. The funding is divided between the two governmental entities based on violent crime statistics as reported to the FBI by the uniform crime reports that each department prepares. Um, city gets ninety-three percent of the funding based on the report of those statistics. And county gets seven percent and the interlocal just outlines, um, that percentage, those percentages and the specific of funding each agency would receive.
This reflects the discussion between county and city in that regard.
Yes, and the commissioners, I believe, have already voted, um, to approve this.
Counsel, do you have questions or comments on this?
On February.
Seeing no questions or comments, we'll invite the public. If you have a comment, come forward in the NatU Hill or raise your hand on teams. All right, seeing no comments, we'll go to a roll call vote.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Crossley?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you very much. That, uh, takes us to item fifteen, counsel comments, and counsel, I'll turn to you for comments here. I've got one after you. Counselor Iverson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thirty million dollars. That is the amount of funding allocated and ready two-point-oh funding for this region, the Indiana Uplands. Uh, and we are just so excited about the economic development that this will bring to our region. Uh, a region across Indiana had the opportunity to apply for this fund and of course, we, uh, were able to bring in that thirty million dollars. So the next step is for eligible organizations to, uh, submit, uh, projects that address key performance indicators which include population growth, per capita income growth, increase in employment opportunities, educational attainment, number of housing units developed, increase in childcare capacity, and increase in innovation activities. If this sounds like something that you can do for our region, please head over to the Regional Opportunity Inc.'s webpage at regionalopportunityinc.org and find out more. Again, thirty million dollars for Indiana Uplands. Congratulations to ROI and all the partners that helped make that happen.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Other counselors? Counselor Crossley?
Thank you. Um, a couple of things. One, um, this upcoming Saturday, um, starting from, it's from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, uh, which is the fourth Saturday of this particular month. Again, just as a gentle reminder, myself along with councilmember, um, Issa Kasari from Bloomington Council at large, we decided that we wanted to have a joint constituent meeting. And we did that and we were very successful at having that last month. And from that meeting, we gathered that we wanted to continue to incorporate, um, both city and county alike. And we're taking it a little step further here at this upcoming Saturday, again, from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, um, at the Monroe County Public Library and the auditorium. We will have our constituent meeting, but we will also have special guests, um, Mayor Kerry Thompson and State Senators Shelley Yoder to provide updates on their particular, um, entities and whatnot. So if anybody is definitely interested, again, this upcoming Saturday from ten-thirty to eleven-thirty, um, will be our joint constituent meeting. The other one thing that I really wanted to say as we continue to talk about a lot of things related to, um, you know, our justice facility and, and getting the updates from, um, Mr. Grass today is that one of the biggest things that I wanted to, uh, mention is, I was watching this, uh, documentary that was on Max and it's called Justice USA. And it's a six-part documentary and it showed Davidson County and different things that they were doing. And I really wanted to bring that to the attention of our body and those that are listening and those that are here or those who are online. And one of the biggest things that they really talked about, in addition to having their, um, their jail, because we are statutory obligated to have that, is that they really worked on trying to have a mental health facility as well. It was separate from the jail. Um, but it was something that was definitely needed and they worked in tandem with groups and organizations um, to provide those that do have mental health issues, um, to get that help and to rehabilitate people back into society. And I would be remiss if I sat silent and didn't say this. I've said it for a while and haven't really had the conversation again. But as we continue to talk about, you know, what this looks like, what cell, what metal we use or locks and this, that and the other, I really would like to challenge our colleagues, us here, um, and public to challenge us a little bit more to really think about, in addition to building a facility, how about we think about really trying to help ourselves and our community and really think about what it looks like to provide, um, mental health options for those. Uh, again, I think that is something that we can do here. We can walk and chew gum at the same time. We have some funds available when it comes to the opioid settlement money. Those different types of things, we can do those things and I just really, uh, I wouldn't be myself, um, as a council member if I didn't, you know, keep continuing to bring that to the forefront. But again, if anybody really wanted to watch that, it's a really good, um, series and it gives us food for thought as what we can do here in Monroe County. So I just wanted to point that out and say that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other counsel comments? I have one I'm going to bring up. Counselor Hawke, first.
Yes, um, I'm glad that I, you did mention something about the mental health facility because that had been discussed somewhat in the past. And, um, I think it's important when we're moving forward with jail location that we are, uh, upfront about what all we think will be in that location. Um, because it's being discussed, it's going to be coming very near, uh, and in my area and people want to know. So if there's discussion whatsoever, uh, that we plan to move a mental health facility, on the same property or some kind of transitional housing or something other than the jail and the courts, then I think we need to be saying so right now because that's just fair.
I see the auditor's hand.
Yeah, if I, um, may just make a comment, I provided, um, Counselor Hawke's requested report on April fifth. So if there are any questions, please do review and let me know what I can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? I have one that I want to offer to counsel and so I need your attention just for a second here. Some of you, uh, know based on staff, uh, distribution to you that, uh, the city of Bloomington has asked if we will lend ourselves to a letter of support for the request from Congresswoman Erin Houchen to support federal appropriations for, uh, Booster Pump Station located at seven four seven zero South Shields Ridge Road, uh, which provides water to, uh, our constituents, the city's constituents on down the road and is vital. And if counselors would like to join me in that letter, I intend to draft one, uh, give me a sign of hands or a thumbs up or something here in public that I can see. Looks like I've got all three. Looks like it's unanimous. We can tell Ms. Moser to prepare it over all seven signatures.
Okay.
Okay? Awesome. Easy enough. Anyone else? Ms. Turner King?
Um, I would like to announce, if you're okay with it, the early voting hours, just so everyone is...
Oh, thank you. Got to announce those.
Early voting hours, um, for April twenty-second to April twenty-sixth is eight AM to six AM. Um, on the twenty-seventh, it's nine AM to four PM. On the week, for the week of the April twenty-ninth to May third, it's eight AM to six AM again. May fourth, um, early voting is from nine AM to four PM. And you can vote on May sixth at early voting from eight AM to noon. Early voting is located at three oh two South Walnut Street, um, which is commonly known as the old Napa Building.
Thank you. And be nice to our election workers. They've got a lot they're doing and they know all about it, so.
And especially my friend Helen who's working really hard.
Helen's working hard. They're all working hard.
For the first time.
It's her first time. We have a lot of people who are stepping up to the plate for the first time and, and it's a real experience.
Good. Helen, we love you, all of you. You're doing a great job. We will see you at the polls. If nothing else, this council meeting is adjourned. Thank you, friends.
Thank you.